Good evening, everyone. This is the Bellebrook Shreve Creek Board of Education meeting. I'm your regular session on Thursday, February 13th, 2020, 7:00 PM. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda item. And I would like to make a brief statement. Many of you already know that the owner and operator of the Belle Hop Cafe, Michael Saban, passed away last evening. This is a great loss for our community. Michael was a generous man and a great supporter of our schools even though he didn't live in our district. As a member of the downtown business community, he hosted weekly events for the village business owners and allowed free access to his gathering room for many events. Candidates held meet and greet events there, and the superintendent has been invited to hold coffees there. He also hosted free breakfast for high school students one Thursday every month. He promoted kindness and generosity, friendship and empathy. He didn't shrink back from sharing his thoughts and perspective, but he did so with gentleness and respect. I encourage you to pray for comfort for Heather, his wife of nearly 50 years, and for all those who knew and loved him. Thanks. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter? Mrs. France?
Here.
Mrs. Long?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Slotman?
Here.
Can you please join me in the pledge, please? The Pledge of Independence. United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, the one God, with the love of his own. It's time for the Treasurers' Report.
I get a motion to approve the minutes from the special meetings of January 6th, 7th, 16th, 30th, and the budget reorganization or regular meeting of January 9th.
Second.
All right, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slotman?
Yes.
I get a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report for the month of January 2020 as included with the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I just want to point out a couple of things. In the blue section, the first sheet shows the board meeting budget comparison report with 58% of the fiscal year passed. That's seven months in. Jeff, are you around here someplace? Jeff Ackley? There you go. Can you put the financial report up on the screen? That's it. You can see with 58% of the year elapsed, the important lines are the state foundation, state funding money. You can see we have 59% of what we expected to get with 58% of the year elapsed. That's pretty good. And then, under expenditures, the salaries, retirement benefits sections show that we spent 57% with 58% elapsed so far. The couple that are over on expenditures are because either we had to make large expenditures beginning of the school year or advances, loans were made to the accounts and paybacks, so we have to show those as expenditures and revenues. That's really all I've got to share, other than, as usual, we're about $700,000 below where we were at this time last year with our general fund balance according to the spreadsheet that appears on the last one of the financial pages. Any questions about any financial reports for the month?
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slotman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. All right, did any of the board members get correspondence this month? All right, nothing to report. We go on to good news recognition. And we have a Purple Star Award for supporting military families that goes this year to Stephen Bell Elementary School. And I'll read this letter, or parts of this letter, from Paulo de Maio in Maria. Excuse me. "The Ohio Department of Education selected Stephen Bell Elementary School as a 2020 Purple Star designee. We applaud and appreciate your outstanding commitment to serving military connected students and families in your school. To be successful in school and when transitioning between school settings, Ohio's military-connected youth require particular supports to ensure that their unique social, emotional and academic needs are met. The Purple Star designation recognizes schools that meet important criteria for serving military-connected students and families." And this one goes to Stephen Bell Elementary with Mrs. Keaton and Mrs. Knipfer are here. This award has also been previously given to the high school and also to Belle Creek. And the middle school is close to satisfying all the requirements for that. So that's great for our district. I hope you can put it in someplace prominent at Stephen Bell Elementary. And congratulations for your success.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter, and thank you to the school board, Dr. Cozad, for the support of Stephen Bell. We have several staff members here from Stephen Bell tonight. This award is a tribute to the staff members as well as Mrs. Knipfer for her leadership in working with all of our students, including the military families, in which I am a military child myself, so we're very proud of all of our armed services. In addition, Mrs. Knipfer could not be here tonight. She is at home packing with her three children. They're moving into their new Bellebrook home this weekend, so thank you.
All right, it's time to go on to reports to the board. We'll have Kim Lord first with STEAM Night.
I'll talk very badly, okay? So STEAM Night is one week from tonight, and I want to take this opportunity to invite all of you to STEAM Night. Not only is it for the kids to gather information, but it gives us a great opportunity to show off what our kids are doing, and they are doing some fabulous things. In addition to the STEAM, I thought Mr. Ackley would want to as well, okay? We also have something new this year, the Administrator's Chili Cook-Off. A lot of people don't know that this year, speaking of Purple Star, the middle school, the eighth grade, they are taking on a year-long community service project to honor our veterans, and they are focusing on auto flight, dating auto flight, doing different activities for them. So we have two Eagle classes who are taking charge of this. So that evening just before STEAM Night, we will have in here Chili Cook-Off with different -- we have, I can't, by ignorance, I can't remember who, but they're all going to be here, okay? But anyway, and veterans will be here as well, so we're also inviting you to come and see that to honor veterans. So STEAM, what is it? Again, we want to immerse our students. They get it somewhat in the classroom at the middle school. We're very fortunate that we have sixth, seventh and eighth grade STEAM classes, but you know, with the elementaries, it's not a daily function. Plus, we're able to bring in community members, businesses, schools, and things like that to do some demos, displays and other things, all right? Now, here we go, here we go. We are inviting professionals and community members, which is also kind of cool. So I want to open it up to all of you as well for next year. If you have something that you would like to contribute to STEAM next year, either display, demo, activity that we are asking you to get over with me and we'll put you out there on stage with the rest of us, so we really want to make this a big community event. Okay, so if you do come, first off, letting your kids know and let you guys know, we have drones, woo-hoo, that gives a lot of things, okay? The drones we fly in the gym. We have things from Wizard of the Bright, our community member bread making, and art. We have DAI, Dayton Art Institute, and other companies. There's just so much going on. I've got signs there, but so that's what you can present as well as, all right, things that our students are doing. So today gets to think about all of this and realizing just what these middle school students are contributing to this. We couldn't do it without them, and that's true. They are immersed, our eighth graders, our NHS, helping us out. We also have a class called Eagle Outreach, and through that class, learning community service, and they are helping me as well. So this is the biggest school involvement, okay, that we have. I have kids coming up to me asking if they can be a volunteer, and I'm like, sure. So it's great that the kids want to be involved. We're hoping that you all want to be involved. We do have a couple of things here that talks about the design presented gift, so we have the good old fashioned Cracker Barrel game, okay, which the kids have. This is one of my projects in my class, but I had a couple of kids design special ones for STEAM Night, so I would like to give one to Mr. Carpenter, one president, and this is a little hand and a woman. No, it's not. Well, I do have that, all right. I'm also going to be giving away goodie bags this year, which have little science experiments such as this one, which this is full of water, and this magic trick, I'm not sure if I'm going to poke this, a hole in this, but I am a little nervous, so I may slip, but the cool thing is, was it going to? Oh, the hole goes through. It doesn't leak. Oh my goodness, it's not magic, it's science, so this is. So we hope to see you all there. This also, BSAF has been so good to ski. My classroom, if you ever make it in my classroom, BSAF has funded the cool equipment that's in my classroom, the lid cutter, the 3D printer. And so what that means is that's been funded by Lord donations, so on behalf of BSAF, myself and my students, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going on to district finances, Dr. Cozad and Kevin Lyming.
Good evening. Again, I'm Dr. Cozad, Superintendent. In advance of today's meeting, the administration and Board of Education has had an opportunity to review the state auditor's report and recommendations. As a superintendent, it's my responsibility to take the financial information available and look at areas of the district's budget that can be adjusted with the least impact on student instruction. Myself, Mr. Lyming, our treasurer, building and district admins, have worked extensively on these recommendations. As I've mentioned at numerous meetings, there are only so many ways that we can make substantial reductions, either by increasing fees, cutting extracurriculars, reducing core teachers, reducing electives or specials, or by reducing transportation. Through informal conversations with community members, levy information meeting last week, my coffees with the superintendent, people have shared their thoughts and ideas on these topics and much more. But we always need and have to keep in mind that student instruction is our core responsibility. It's also my responsibility to make sure the Board of Education receives all the information it needs to make informed decisions. In advance of today's meeting, I have provided the board members with extensive information about what my recommendations are for additional reductions, including an advanced copy of my presentation recommendations. Some board members have taken the opportunity to call me with their own questions, and I've tried to include that information in my presentation this evening. So if board members, if you have additional questions about the recommendations tonight after my presentation, I'll do my best to answer those. Again, this is our financial update, and as you know, we have, we're at a critical juncture here. We really are. We have outstanding dedicated teachers and staff that do a fantastic and excellent job of supporting and educating our children. The district is consistently recognized for this effort and ranked among the best locally and across the state. If you just look at our quality profile, you see the 15 AP classes that we offer. You see the 3,000 community service hours logged by our JROTC at the high school. And you also see the incredible learning experiences going on in our classrooms on a daily basis. But as you know, the single, and as I know, the single most important issue facing our district right now is our budget.
Okay, as you know, Issue 9 is on the ballot March 17th. Some facts about that. It's a 5.7 mil operating levy. The district last passed an operating levy in 2015. An operating levy helps fund the district's day-to-day operations. This is not a tax to build a building or for any other purposes than to just continue the operation of the district. One of the major problems that we have right now causing the situation is that we only get 27% of our district budget revenue from the state of Ohio compared to the state average districts that get 44%, and that's because a good measure of it is based upon income level and property valuation level of the residents in that school district compared to the average in the state. So the higher the income and property value level, the lower the state funding. The district has made already over $2.3 million in budget reductions in our general fund between the summer of 2018 and last year. And then the cost of the levy if passed to a taxpayer would be $16.60 a month per $100,000 appraised market value of your home, or a little bit under $200 a year for $100,000 property value. Other facts about Issue 9. It would raise about $3.3 million for the district if passed in March. You would not see it on a tax bill until January of 2021, and that's when it would first appear. Another big reason for our situation financially is unfunded and underfunded mandates that cost the district about $3.6 million in 2018, 19. These are things that are mandated by the state or federal government. We have to do them, but we either are not funded at all for them or partially funded. And a lot, a lot of them are great things, but it's just something we have to finance. For example, college credit plus where a high school student can get college credit, we, the school district then is required to pay the tuition and books for that student. You know, the obvious costs of items like preschool is mandated, special education costs, charter schools, we lose money when kids attend there, and there are numerous other ones. Those are some of the larger ones, but there are lots of them. Did I leave any of them?
No, no, those are, yep.
All right. One of the questions we're asked a lot is, what are you going to do with the additional money for new construction, reappraisals, inside millage, cornerstone project? We have all those budgeted already into our forecast, and it amounts to about 2% of our budget. It's a lot of money to an individual, but not a lot of money on a $30 million school district general fund budget.
And also, and you've said this in the past, that our state funding is relatively flat also, so that's another piece to this whole thing. And also, obviously, our increased cost of doing business, like everybody else's costs increase, our costs also increase.
And also, property tax levies are somewhat flat, definitely flat compared to income tax levies, so we don't have any income tax levies. Five-year forecast, as you can see here, the first row shows that what it is right now, if nothing's done, we're looking at an $11.6 million deficit June 30th, 2024, up there at the top right. And if we pass the levy, the bottom row would be in effect for our cash balance at the end of each one of those fiscal years. You can see we're fine until 2024, where we're slightly into the red, but we could make cuts to take care of that, so that we would be okay through 2024.
And we're going to cover that in just a little bit. So just to give you some background information, and so we have been looking at reductions and have been doing reductions since 2018. And let's just talk a little bit about these. And again, I know I've gone over these at various meetings, previous meetings, however, you know, some people are new tonight and also, you know, to be honest with you, there's quite a few here, so it's sometimes a little hard to keep track. So in 2018, we had about $500,000 in reductions, and that included four teachers that we have reassigned within the school district, a part-time mechanic that we reduced. We also reduced our budgets at the building level and technology. We eliminated all-day, everyday kindergarten scholarships. And also, in the Treasurers' Department, payroll clerk went to part-time, and also our business, our manager of business went from full-time to part-time in that time. June, May of 2019, we did have a 7.5 mil replacement levy on the ballot. Obviously, that did not pass, and that really prompted us to look at additional reductions, and that's what we did in June of 2019. We had Phase 1 worth of reductions, and those were about $813,000. And so we had two teachers involved in that. One, we did not replace, another, we moved into another open position. Two technology aides, one, high school digital academy, that ran the digital academy at the high school, a custodian here at the middle school, two part-time cafeteria aides, five full-time bus drivers, and reduction in the budgets at the building level, technology and athletics. And we also postponed the purchase of buses. And if you've seen the auditor's recommendations in that report, actually, about half of our fleet is ready for replacement, but due to budget restrictions, we haven't been able to replace those. As you can also hear, in July of 2019, a performance audit by the State Auditor's Office started, and that just finished in January. Also, in summer of 2019, we made some additional reductions that totaled about $168,000. We didn't replace a high school teacher and a third-grade teacher. We filled those internally. And also, we had a decrease in insurance benefits. Our employees had a decrease in insurance benefits that saved us a little money. So as you see, we did not put the levy on the ballot in November 2019. We continued to make reductions and we really thought it was too early and not enough time to go from the May levy and to get enough momentum and enough reductions in there, because one of the things that was stated in the survey that we conducted last summer was, if you are going to come back and ask for more money, make sure you make reductions. And so we did Phase 1 reductions, we did additional reductions in 2019. We didn't put a levy on the ballot. Instead, we had additional reductions that totaled about $1 million, and that included a 0% pay freeze for all staff and no steps for all staff, and that's for next school year. And we also filled three positions through attrition. And so if you add all those up, it's over $2.3 million, and included about 20 staff positions that were eliminated, 10 of those are certified. So I apologize for the length of that, but I think it's important to realize that we've been well aware of the budget concerns and issues, and we have been proactive in dealing with those issues.
You can see here, this is our current five-year forecast, general fund monies, and the number that is circled there is $1,893,000 in the red. That is for June 30th, 2022, our prediction for that period of time. Because of that number being negative, the Ohio Department of Education, who looks at these forecasts two years ahead, has started, put us in precaution, financial caution status, and it's requiring us to, tonight, approve reductions that will show them how we can alleviate that deficit, and we're not allowed to assume levy passage. So we have to show them totally in reductions how we will eliminate that, because all the other reductions we've made up to this point are already reflected in this to get to those numbers. So that's where we are right now.
This was in the auditor's report. This is local tax effort. So this takes into consideration a community's tax burden. That's essentially what this graph is saying. So it looks at the property wealth of a school district, not of the school, but of the community. Property wealth of the community and income level of the community, which our average income level in this community is $110,000. So it took those two things in consideration and then compared it to what taxes our taxpayers are actually paying. And so if you look at this, we are the lowest in the area, and actually Centerville and Beaver Creek have passed a levy since this time, so they're going to be even higher up there. So Xenia, for example, based on property wealth and their income levels compared to the taxes they're being paid, they almost have a twice as much tax burden as the residents of Bellebrook Shreve Creek community. So going along with that performance audit, again, we're going to skim through some of this because we covered this extensively on January 30th when we had the auditors present to us. So how did we, what led to this audit by the Ohio Auditor's Office? So they looked at our May 2019 forecast, and they also looked at the May 2019 levy failure. So those, a combination of those two things prompted them to, for us to get together and work collaboratively with them to address those projected deficit balances. So this was no cost to the school district. Normally, it costs $80,000. This is no cost to the school district. And so what did they find? They found that we were taking proactive measures in dealing with the budget. As we just saw, as I went through extensively a few slides ago, they looked at that and said, you are working on this proactively, of working on your budget. And, but they identified 11 recommendations that could lead to cost savings. So they come in, again, they worked here for six months. They looked at our books, they looked at our information, they talked with Mr. Lyming, talked with myself. Mrs. Sigmund was the liaison on the project and worked extensively with us, looked at staffing levels, looked at finances, they looked at everything. And so they came up with 11 recommendations, but those recommendations didn't resolve the projected deficit at the end, so they essentially had recommendation 12, which is what I would call kind of the nuclear option, is we really can't see any other savings, so you just need to cut a lot of staff. I mean, that's, and we'll get into that in a second, but that's essentially what recommendation number 12 is. From the phrases they used, they were digging at the bottom of the barrel to try to find reductions. Mr. Lyming, I don't know if you want to say what you normally say about the two things that you want to find in an audit or a performance audit?
For this kind of an audit, a performance audit, where they come in and they look for ways for your district to save money, you may hope, like we did, that they would find some big areas where we could save a lot of money and make a lot of cuts. Of course, on the other hand, if they found a lot of those areas, you feel like you weren't doing a very good job in the first place, maybe. But on the other hand, then you might say you hope they don't find much of anything, which would show we're doing a great job, but then that doesn't help us with our budget reductions that we need to make. So it's kind of a catch-22, and that second part is more what, where they landed, they, we've made so many cutbacks and looked this thing over. They, we've made so many cutbacks and looked this thing over up and down, they couldn't find much of anything without really getting into the core, hurting the district.
And again, I, again, I think that's important to point out is, to us, this report points out that we have been good stewards of the taxpayer money. We have been fiscally responsible, because they had a really difficult time trying to find substantial savings. And so, I think that's important to keep in mind, this report, that they didn't find a lot of things, because we're already being fiscally responsible and good stewards of our taxpayer money. So some other areas, you know, they examined some other areas, but there were no recommendations warranted those areas, and we'll get into those in a minute also, because those are equally important. You know, the areas that they looked at and said, we really can't find any savings here because you're where you need to be. So let's just look at a few of these. Again, I'm not going to go through twelve recommendations here. We did that on January thirtieth. But I think a few of these are warranted, just to take a little closer look at. So recommendation number three, that is essentially a subs, so our extracurriculars, not only sports, but all of our clubs and so forth. So what they normally would recommend is for, so they compare us against primary peer districts, which are districts throughout the state that are similar to us academically and financially. So districts around here, that would be Monroe, Ross, Tip City, those are some districts around here you would recognize. There's other ones around the state you probably wouldn't recognize, but they're, they're primary peer, and then also local peers, and then state averages. So those are the comparisons they, they use throughout most of the report. So the extracurricular here, so we pay for all of the salaries of everybody that has a supplemental contract in the school district. So we pay for that out of a general fund. Normally, they would recommend, just get down to your primary peers. Just get down to your primary peers of per pupil spending, not per athlete or, or club member, but per pupil spending. So we're about forty dollars higher than our primary peer. But since they couldn't find savings anywhere else, or substantial savings in other areas, they are saying, get rid of that entire subsidy of seven hundred thousand dollars. So if you looked at it just through pay-to-play, there are other ways. You could cut sports, you could try to increase admission fees into events and so forth. Those are, could be some other ways. But if you look at it just through pay-to-play, just through that option, it would probably be a thousand, twelve hundred dollars per kid, per af, per sport, per athlete, or per kid, based on last year's number. So more likely, less kids would be participating in those activities. So those numbers would probably go up even more if you wanted to really do a net-zero kind of approach to that. So another recommendation, recommendation number five, so they recommended getting rid of or reducing by point five career tax, one counselor, one point five nurses, and point five library staffing. And so, again, it doesn't take into account configuration of buildings. You know, if you have a building that's a six to twelve building, you might be able to, to get away with only one nurse, or one librarian, or things like that, where if you have in separate buildings, it's, it's much, much more challenging to get away with that, or to have it at the same service levels that you really would want. And then, the last area, again, is that recommendation number twelve. So you add it up, so if you add up all those eleven recommendations, in, in year one, they're recommending two point five million dollars in recommendations, so that'd be for next year. So that, that, that two point five million dollars, seven hundred thousand of that is for the extracurriculars. And then, one point four million of that is this recommendation number twelve, which is essentially reduce your staff by ten point five percent or sixteen certified staff members. So those two things, seven hundred thousand and one point four, are two point one million dollars of the two point five million dollars. So those are two things that they normally wouldn't recommend, but since they couldn't find savings anywhere else, they're, they, they recommend those. But they also, and again, this is in the report, they also say, if you're going to do that, the service levels in your school district are going to change drastically. So yes, you can cut sixteen teachers, you can cut ten point five percent of your staff. However, the service levels, the opportunities, the experiences of your students are not going to be the same. So I think that's also important to, to point out in there.
Of course, this is also after we've already cut twenty employees.
Correct. So some of the things that they didn't find, or they looked at, but they didn't find, or they didn't offer recommendations are salaries of certified staff members and classified staff members. Our salaries were, when you, were lower, except in one category, bachelors plus one fifty. So the way they looked at that is they looked at our entire salary schedule, and they compared it to other districts' salary schedule. They didn't look at it, your average south teacher salary, because one school district might have a more veteran teaching staff than another school district. So you look at your salary schedule, and so we were lower in every category except bachelors one fifty, and will be even lower next year because we're on a pay freeze next year. So that's going to be also next year. But they also didn't have recommendations for general, general teachers, specials teachers, maintenance, custodial staffing. Actually, we're, we're about eight to ten people below, FTE equivalents, full-time equivalents, in our, in our surf, or I'm sorry, in our maintenance, custodial, and grounds. So, you know, they do a fantastic job keeping everything clean and, and tidy and looking nice, and really are understaffed in that area.
So we've looked at a lot of forecasts tonight. This is yet another one. This one is with no levy, but just implementing every single one of the recommendations of that performance audit team, including not funding any extracurriculars, pay freezes all the way out there, cutting sixteen staff members, all the things that they recommended, we would just barely make it again to twenty twenty-four by doing that. So this is the forecast that they came up with if every single one of their recommendations were approved.
So we actually would, you know, based on this, we would, we would probably need a levy in twenty-two, twenty-three, somewhere in that range, because you're, we're out of money in twenty twenty-four here. So even if we did all the recommendations, actually, it's sixteen staff members, plus in another recommendation, there was about six staff members. So actually, it's over twenty staff members in their recommendations. And if you did all of that, and that would impact and change service levels in a district, you're still going to, the, the auditors through their report would say, we're still going to be out of money in twenty twenty-four. I think it's important to, to also note.
I think I've already addressed this one, that we are going to have to approve reductions tonight, and then submit those to the Ohio Department of Education to show that we have a plan in place to alleviate that one point eight nine million dollar deficit for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year without a levy.
And so, now we're on to the budget reduction. So again, I know it took a while there to give you a lot of background, but I think that context is important to, to see the whole picture here, and not just, you know, what we're, what we're here, you know, talking about the budget reductions, but to see that we have been proactively trying to address the budget issues and concerns. And we've already eliminated twenty staff members and ten, ten of those being certified teachers. And so, we've been very proactive. So we have two, two phases here. So we have phase three, which is regardless of levy passage, because if you remember a few slides ago, even if we do pass a levy, we're still right at about zero or so at the end of our five-year forecast. So there are things, there's reductions that we still have to do in order to push off that as much as possible, to push that off in the future. So if you make a little cut right now, for example, we'll be real simplistic. If you make a fifty-dollar cut this year, and you keep that fifty-dollar cut there, it's going to be enough, it's going to be the fifty again in the next year, fifty again, and then fifty again. So over the next four years, that fifty-dollar cut you did in year one, it's actually going to add up to two hundred dollars, if that makes sense. So you get that cumulative effect because you didn't bring that back. So if we make some reductions now, they can be a little less, rather than if we put it off a little bit, then they have to be really drastic, okay? So that's, that's kind of the frame of mind and, and concept that we were going with. So let's talk about budget reductions that regardless of, of levy passage. So here are some things that we're going to, to do regardless of levy passage. So we have a program at BCI that is called STEP. That is our pull-out gifted program. So those students are pulled out half a day throughout the week. That is not offered at any of our other buildings. So unfortunately, we see that as something that, that we're going to reduce. So students are still going to get gifted services, but it's going to be through their core teacher. World language offerings at the middle school, that is something that we are going, are not going to offer. So French and Spanish is no longer going to be offered at the middle school. One high school English position is going to be reduced. And so, what that means is there's going to be less electives offerings in, in ELA in English, and also an increase in class sizes. We're going to raise a sports participation, participation fees from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred dollars. So again, as we look around at other school districts, really, people range from zero as a fee to anywhere from two to three to four hundred dollars. So districts are all over the place with that. And so, that additional money is going to go into the general fund, because if you remember, we had a seven hundred thousand dollar subsidy that we are subsidizing our extracurriculars. So that peer is about a hundred thousand dollars that we are, we're over about a hundred thousand. So that participation fee is, that extra money is going to go to that. Also, fifty dollars of marching band, color guard, winter guard, IPE fees will go to the district. Again, try to decrease that subsidy that the district is, and offsetting that. And then, we're going to increase all-day, everyday kindergarten tuition by nine hundred dollars a year. And actually, this is about the amount that it was a few years ago, so we're bringing it back up to that amount. So through those positions there, we have, we're going to have two open positions in second and third grade. Those are going to be filled by involuntary transfers. In the summer of twenty twenty, we are not going to resurface our lots. So normally, every summer, we put over a, a fresh layer. We, we do a lot, a few lots at a time, and we rotate. And so, this year, we aren't going to resurface any of our lots. And we are not going to do any landscaping mulch. We are going to do playground mulch, because that's a safety issue, but we're not going to do landscape mulch this summer. And we're also going to delay the purchase of Chromebooks for a year. So again, that, that was, that was one of the things that was in the auditor's recommendations, was delaying the purchase of those Chromebooks. So if you add those up, reductions in amount of twenty, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, that's fiscal year twenty-one, we're about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in reductions, and then reductions in twenty-one, twenty-two is about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So those are the amounts. And that four hundred and sixty is because about two hundred and fifty of that is the, is the Chromebooks that we are pushing off. But we're going to continue to look for ways, if a position comes open, we're going to take a real hard look at that and see if we do actually need to fill that position. Because again, the more reducing that we do at the beginning here, it gets that cumulative effect. And so, now we go to phase four, if the march levy does not pass. Again, let, let's be clear here. As we go through these, these are, these are hurtful. I mean, these really are. It's going to mean less opportunities for our students. Excuse me. And so, th, these are the things that we are going to do. So we're going to do this by each school. So this is Belbrook High School. And so, we are going to eliminate one teacher in the soul studies department. Again, that's a reduction in electives and larger class sizes. We're going to contract with the Green County Career Center for our biomed program. We're going to reduce our library staffing to one, or two point five, so half a staff member will be there. We're going to eliminate high school busing. That's a state minimum. We're going to eliminate high school busing. And then, we're going to raise high school participation fees from two hundred to three hundred. We already raised it, if you remember from previous slides, we raised it for everybody at two hundred. We're going to keep middle school at two hundred, but we're going to raise high school to three hundred. And we're going to eliminate forty-nine paid supplementals and our athletic positions. So we're going to go through these. Again, these are very difficult to do and stressful, and again, like I said earlier, this is going to be less opportunities for our students. The administrative staff has really spent a lot of time and effort, and then again, like I said, it's extremely heart-wrenching to have to, to present these. So here's some of the high school supplementals that will be eliminated. So science fair, says science fair last night, or two nights ago. Academic team advisors, class advisors for senior, freshman, and sophomore, diversity advisor, Eagle Act clunce, that's two, two of those. Key club, tech STEM advisor, model UN, mock trial, newspaper advisor, productions assistant, site manager, two of those. One class advisor for junior, intermural advisor, air force, ROTC, color guard, and fitness and model club, guidance director, jazz, pep band director, English chairperson, foreign language chairperson, math, PE, fine arts, science, social studies, special education, and STEM, business, ROT, chairpersons. So all of those paid positions will be eliminated next year. And then, so we go on here. This is more the sports section. Assistant weight training advisor, cheerleader advisor, assistant boys freshman, reserve B soccer coach, high school boys, girls assistant cross-country coach, high school assistant softball coach, high school assistant boys track coach, high school boys reserve soccer coach, high school girls reserve soccer coach, high school freshman boys basketball coach, high school freshman football coach, high school freshman girls basketball coach, high school boys reserve lacrosse, lacrosse coach, high school girls reserve lacrosse coach, high school boys assistant tennis, high school girls assistant tennis, high school assistant swimming and diving, high school freshman volleyball coach, high school freshman baseball coach, high school girls freshman soccer coach, and high school reserve wrestling coach. Again, we tried to, to kind of go across the board there and try to go across the board there of those. So those are, that's, that's what you're seeing at the high school. So as we go through this, we're, we're going through each one, so you can see at each, each level what the reductions are going to be. So now, we're going to move on to the middle school. Again, these are only if the levy does not pass, okay? So let's keep that in mind. These are only if the levy does not pass. So at the middle school, no middle school keyboarding class, no sixth-grade art. Library position is reduced to point five. We're going to reduce transportation to the state minimum two mile, and we're going to eliminate twenty-five paid supplementals and athletic positions. And so, what those supplementals look like at the middle school is football is one position, track one position. Again, there's a lot less athletic positions at the middle school. Camp, camp, camp current advisors, ten, are going to be eliminated. That's all of them. Tech, STEM, club, newspaper, board at school club, math, pentathlon, the building leadership team, four spots, the play, the musical, the power of the pen, student council, and National Honor Society. And now, we're going to go on to Bell Creek. We're going to eliminate art at Bell Creek, and we're going to eliminate STEM classes at Bell Creek. We're going to reduce transportation to the minimum two state, or two-mile state requirement. Library position is going to be reduced to point five, and we're going to eliminate six-page supplementals, so third, fourth, fifth grade chairperson, student council, the academic team advisor, and the elementary productions advisor. And at Stephen Bell, we're going to eliminate art classes, STEM classes, library position is going to be reduced to point five, and five paid supplementals will be eliminated. So first, second, and third grade, I'm sorry, that's kindergarten, first and second grade chairpersons, and two elementary production advisors. So if you, if you notice the theme there with the library position, so essentially, we're going to have two librarians take care of four bill- to have two librarians take care of four buildings. And so that's going to be obviously reduced by half. And that's something that really hurts also. We take a lot of pride in obviously literacy and building that strong foundation there. But again, as we go through these, we tried as much to stay out of the core, and we tried to really approach it from the elective specials or the transportation piece. And so again, these are extremely hurtful and impactful for our students, especially and especially that STEM one. We're really the only one of the school districts in the entire area, one that I really know that we have STEM K-12. And I know that's really something that is going to be a big loss. We also have some district level reductions. So those are specific to buildings. So district level reductions, we're going to reduce staff development opportunities and money. We're going to delay curriculum adoptions in math and science. And we dearly need some adoptions in math and science, but we're going to delay those. We're also going to non-renew select electronic subscriptions. And we're also going to non-renew our contract with our communications consultant, Allerton Hill. So again, those are things at the district level that we are going to reduce. So some totals here as we look at all those. So reductions in force, essentially, that's the way in school and education that we essentially say we're laying off those employees, reduction in force. So it's going to be three certified teachers and four classified. And then we're going to involuntary transfer four certified teachers and two classified staff, filling positions through attrition and openings. Again, these are things that the levy does not pass. So again, another summary slide here. So if you look at those staffing reductions, that's 13 staffing reductions. So reduction enforced by seven and attrition would be through six staff members. We're reducing by 85 paid supplementals throughout the district. Eighty-five, if you add all those up. So reductions in the amount of 20, for fiscal year '21, there is 1.1, $1,174,980 there. And then those carry over into the next year. So it's $1,283,776. So that's a total of, you know, just a little over $2.4 million. So the amount that we were looking for was about $1.9 million. That's the plan that we have to submit to ODE. But you know, when you're dealing with a $30 million budget, you really can't get down to zero. You have to have a little money left over. So that will leave us about $500,000 or so in reserve there. And that's really what this slide is saying here. So 1.8, that's that fiscal year '22. So instead of having negative 1.89 million there, it would be about plus $500,000 in that line. Which again, as you see on the right-hand side of there, this is from the auditor's office. They recommend having 60 days cash on hand, which is about $3 million in reserves. So even if we do all these, you know, if the levy does not pass, and these reductions are done, you know, we're already at below the 3 million already right now. Again, when you're talking about a $30 million budget, obviously, it's about 10%. You need to make payroll and those kinds of things. So they recommend about 60 days cash on hand. So with that being said, and like I said earlier, we'll continue to look for other cost-saving measures to try to push those things off. And again, these, you know, the reductions that I am, that we're recommending to the board, that we're recommending are, like I said earlier, you know, these are extremely impactful, devastating. These are going to change the student experience at the school and your child's experience, my child's experience at the schools. And you know, they're, you know, I guess as a community, you have to decide what kind of school district do you want? Do you want a state minimum kind of school district? Or do you want some that have some opportunities for our students? That's really what it comes down to. Do you want a state minimum kind of school district? Because if you do, you know, if the voters say that, you know, that, to me, that's very devastating. It's not the kind of school district I don't want for my own child, as I still have a child in school district. But that's really what it boils down to. What kind of school district do we want? Because these are the kind of opportunities, the art, the STEM, you know, social studies, those librarians. So those are the kind of experiences that make for a well-rounded student and a well-rounded experience for our students and our future. You know, and I think a couple meetings ago, Mrs. France said this, you know, spent years building this. We have spent years building to where we need to be. And we're that close of dismantling that brick by brick. So that's why, you know, I started this out, we are a critical juncture here because of that. You know, we spent years building a fantastic school district, and we're that close, that close, that go on the other direction. Mr. Liming, do you have anything else you want to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. So again, finding out more information here, obviously on our website, communications, there are a lot of ways for communications there. There will be, the bridge will be coming out later this month. And the reductions information, other information will be in there. So again, that goes out to every community member in the district. So all that information will be in there. Please encourage your neighbors, those that don't, especially those that don't have kids in school, because again, that's the challenge of getting that information out to everybody in the community. That actually is still our number one way of getting factual information out to our communities through the bridge. That was, you know, shown through the survey from last summer. But the other way is mouth to mouth, person to person. That's the other way of getting information. That's the other way that people found out their information. So that's why it's important that you're here. That's why it's important for you to be educated. So as you hear other people in the community saying X, Y, and Z, you can verify if X, Y, and Z is accurate, or if X, Y, and Z is not accurate, if you know that information. If you know that information. If you don't know that information, and people can say whatever they want to say, and you really can't refute it because you don't know the correct information. For more information, there's my information, my contact information, Mr. Liming's contact information. We also have a community information meeting coming up right here on the 17th, which is President's Day at night at 6 o'clock. Actually, we're going to bring David Graham back. He's going to present for about, you know, same as last time on February 3rd. We had a good turnout on February 3rd. So he's going to talk about for hour, and then district representatives are going to talk about, talk for about an hour. There's a survey online if you want to submit a question prior to, or if you want to, we have three-by-five cards here, if you want to come in and write down a question, you can do that also at that time. And then we have call through the superintendent on February 27th at 7:15 and 9:15. Couple weeks ago, we had a really good turnout. We had a call through the superintendent at night, caffeine at night. That was, when was that? Tuesday. That was Tuesday. Two people, two people showed up. Two people showed up. We had a meeting Monday night at St. Francis. Four people showed up. So we had really, really in-depth conversations with those six people. They became very well-educated, so they can speak intelligently about the information. But I wish those numbers would have been higher to get that information out. So again, we have a good chance on February 17th to find out some information and to ask some questions. So again, that's my presentation. And so the information here, the phase three and the phase four recommendations, those are the recommendations we get back, or we go into the agenda a little bit farther. There's going to be a spot in there to ask for approval of those recommendations. So that's what I'm asking for of those, and Mr. Liming, of those phase three and phase four. So do any board members have questions or comments?
I'd like to see that we'll have a bit in our reserve fund. I'm glad to see we'll have a bit in our reserve fund. The 60-day cash on hand of $3 million is pretty unattainable at this point. But having half a million at least is a bit of some assurance. So appreciate, we appreciate the work that you and Mr. Liming and the administration has done. This, I know, has been incredibly difficult. It's incredibly difficult to hear. I don't think that it's anything that any of us here on the board relish doing. But I don't see much alternatives either. Anyone else?
I want to, is that one?
Yep.
I want to thank the teachers and the teachers' union. You have been so good to us. This has been an incredible amount of stress when you're dealing with people's lives. We chose very carefully what to eliminate. And one thing we didn't want to eliminate were nurses, teachers, and student programs that they enjoy. We tried very, very hard, and I think we've kept them in for the time being. Thank you so much for helping with that.
Excuse me. I'd just like to say, last night, I was in a meeting for the Green County Career Center. And at the end of the meeting, we go around and have board member comments. And we have members on the board from all seven schools in Green County. And as we're going through, Beaver Creek has a levy on. Xenia is going to have a bond issue on the ballot probably in the fall. Yellow Springs is having a school funding town meeting like we have had. Cedarville has a continuing substitute levy that's going to be on the ballot. Greenview is, doesn't have a levy on, but they're doing some building. Fairborn is looking at placing a levy on in the fall to, or a bond issue to replace their middle school. So as part of a board that has been accused of using lousy management style, being very unappreciative of the taxpayers' money, I think you can see that it's not our board that's doing this. It is every board in the county. And if you have a major complaint, and we all do, you need to go to the state because our state representatives, state senators need to know how you feel, and they need to know what they need to do to finance schools. Because they have just ignored everything that was put to them that they were supposed to replace. And they're just trying to go as long as they can with the same people in there who are just not doing what they're supposed to be doing for our area and our students. So just keep that in mind, that it's not just us, it's everybody out there.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on that, I mean, that's just the way the funding models are in Ohio, is you have to go back to your local voters, especially for school districts that get little money from the state. The local taxpayers pay for majority of the school district. I mean, that is just the way it is in Ohio, and we don't like that. We think that's unfair. However, that's what it is right now. So again, just to kind of piggyback on that, if you remember, December 16th, we had Representative Cup in here. People wanted to learn about the state funding model, so we brought the person that is proposing that in the state legislature, we brought him here to present to us. And so they did simulations based on every school district of how much additional money we're going to get if they find the money, which they haven't found the money for yet. They keep on leaving that key piece out, but I think that's an important piece. But if they do find the money, then we'll get $160,000 more in year one, and we'll get $140,000 more in year two. So will we take $160,000, $140,000? Sure, we'll take that money. Is that going to be such a huge windfall that we don't have to go back to the taxpayers for additional money out of a $30 million budget? No, that is not. So the state funding model, even though they're changing, because they're changing it, now it's property wealth, they're changing to income also. So they're adding income to that whole piece. And if you remember earlier, our average income in this community is $110,000. So that actually, they added that piece in there, that actually hurt us of getting more money from the state. Did you have some, Kevin?
Can you hear me? Okay.
No. I think it's on now.
Now?
Yeah.
Good. So I grew up two hours away from here in Sauk County, Portsmouth area. I think our average, I have to look it up, but I think it's on the order of $35,000 to $40,000 a year versus $110,000. And what you see here is all the school districts that Mrs. France rattled on, they're in this part of Ohio, which is economically better off than some of the other areas like where I grew up. And that area still remains quite economically deprived. And so the state has chosen a funding model that likely penalizes what we have, if you do well, you get penalized. And so I'm going to, since I wrote this out, I'm just going to pretty much reiterate what was just said, but I'm going to just read it because I think I've got my thoughts a little bit organized if I read them versus just rattled them off. And Doug, this is kind of consistent with what you just said about Representative Cup coming out, so bear with me. Everybody still here? Is it good? Okay, on December 16th, Representative Robert Cup, Republican, Lima, presented a school funding plan that he and Representative John Patterson, Democrat, Jefferson, have sponsored and have been working on for the last few legislative sessions. For those of you that attended his presentation or have otherwise researched the Cup-Patterson plan, Belbrook Sugar Creek schools will realize little if any benefit if this legislation were to be passed and funded, as you said, because that $160,000, I guess, per year. Unfortunately, this plan is the only plan on the radar for reforming school funding in Ohio. Therefore, the state has no current or pending plan to fund schools according to Ohio law as decreed by the Droughoff decision some 20 years ago. As a result, Ohio schools and districts such as ours will have to rely on a property tax, on a property tax levy or an income tax to provide school funding. A suggestion has been made to cut and cap the teacher salaries to address the school system's funding shortfalls. First and foremost, to hear this loud and clear, Belbrook teachers are not overpaid. They earn every dollar they make, and they are appropriately compensated commensurate with their commitment and expense to become certified public teachers and according to their many years of service. Even if salary reductions were considered, the teachers work under a contract that prescribes their current salaries. Those salaries cannot be cut as it would break the contract. Introducing a salary reduction in a future contract would be fraught with legal difficulties. But you know what? Let's just disregard all that for now and allow for a moment that the teacher salaries are cut to address the approximate $3 million per year budget shortfall that Belbrook Sugar Creek schools is facing. Did you know if that was done in a few years, the teacher salaries would need to be cut again? And in a few more years, they need to be cut again? Why? We can thank the state for this one as well. This is a result of House Bill 920 that permanently freezes the revenue from a levy at the amount that it was at time of passage. So as other expenses go up, electricity, building maintenance, bus replacing, et cetera, and revenue stays the same, the only way to meet the budget is to continue to cut the teacher salaries every few years. Take it to the extreme, this is where it gets interesting, if you extrapolated out for a few decades, the teachers would eventually get to pay the school district for their privilege to teach. And just do the math, and that's true. Or we could continually cut teachers' positions. How about that one-room schoolhouse? How's that sound? So the community must make a decision, in the near term, either fund the So the community must make a decision, in the near term, either fund the schools locally through a property tax levy and/or an income tax, or accept continued cuts to the school system, like those that were detailed this evening. In the long term, and as an alternative, the community may want to consider working with the state to obtain more state funding for our school system to which it is entitled, according to Ohio law.
Just give it a second.
One other thought that was shared with me is that there's a perception that if we don't get additional funding from our tax base, our community, that the state will eventually come in and give us the money that we need. And that's, as you want to say, "That ain't gonna happen." That's not on their radar. They will continue to tell us to continue to cut and continue to ask for levies. So if the levy fails, it's not that there's going to be anybody riding in on Whitehurst to provide the additional funding for us.
Just to add to that, they'll actually make us borrow from the next year. So then we'll be in deeper hole the next year. And so the way I try to think of that is like a payday loan. You know, you can never get out of the payday loan cycle. So they're going to come in and give us money, additional money like that, a windfall. Other questions or comments? Again, I think I can speak for everybody from the administrative team that worked extremely hard, and extremely stressful, and extremely impactful, and extremely hurtful of trying to put together this list. This is not a list that you ever want to put together, but it's something that we really put a lot of time and effort and thought into, and tried to have the least amount of impact on core instruction. And I think we did that. However, there are some pieces in there that you just can't, you can't, places you had to do it because there wasn't anything, anywhere else to go with that. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving into talking communication time. There's 15 minutes per subject, three minutes per person. So as a reminder, according to policy, we have, don't allow any vulgar or abusive language. Don't allow campaigning, this is our campaign zone. No personally directed comments. And again, three minutes per person. So Paul Sampson.
Hi, I'm Paul Sampson, 23-year resident, and...
Address the board.
I'm sorry.
General standard of attention, just here.
So the, yeah, perfect, thanks. There's a commercial going around, AT&amp;T sponsoring, and it says, "It's okay." "How's the fish?" "It's okay." "How's your doctor?" "Oh, he's okay." Recently reborn, certified. I just had rotator surgery, and I didn't want okay. So I found a doctor named Asika who lives on our neighborhood, he's one of our neighbors, and he did this four weeks ago. And I wasn't looking for okay, I was looking for excellence. I was looking for a genius to do this surgery. We moved here 23 years, 25 years ago, looking for a place to live because of a military transfer, and I narrowed down my choices and decided on Bell Brook because of its school system. Two kids at the time, a little bit later, we had another kid come along somewhat unexpectedly, and all three have graduated. So I've got the note here, and all these people here on this list that would not be here, including out of state travel, Bell Creek Math Contathlon, team to Indianapolis. I've got two daughters that did this. One's an architect in Colorado, and another one's a civil servant program manager at Wright Patterson Air Force Base, Math Contathlon. Eighth-grade students to Washington DC. My son laid a tomb with an unknown soldier. He's at OSU, he's a swimmer, sophomore there in the program, and he's taken flying lessons to join the military. I think we have a lot to, a lot to be proud of. Frankly, I moved to Bell Brook so I could have this school district. Many of you maybe did the same thing. And so I'm not looking for okay on this budget, I'm looking for excellence. I'm looking for something that we can hold our head up high of, and I think I have been for the last 23 years. I hope we continue, and frankly, up to you.
Tom Scaffer?
I've got a chart here that I think everybody should take a look at. I call it the levy millage shell game, or as I like to call it, the big bait-and-switch con game of issue nine. The levy was rejected by the voters in May of 2019, which was for 7.5 mils. The levy on March 2020 ballot is for 5.7 mils. If you think that the district decided to give the taxpayers a 1.8 mil break for making millions of dollars of cuts, you would be wrong. Here's why. The May 2019 issue was a replacement levy. It was designed to replace an existing levy from 1981 that was originally for 7.5 mils, but currently reduced to an effective millage of 1.68. The May 2019 levy was effectively, is effectively asking only 5.82 mils of additional funding. Now, if we fast forward to now, the March 2020 levy is an additional levy. No existing levy is being replaced. The 1981 levy is being left in full force and will continue at 1.68 mils. The new additional levy will generate, if it passes, 5.7 mils. Together, but the board has not told anyone, they generate 7.38 mils total. Now, the only way that you would find that out is if you looked at the ballot. They hid within the language of the ballot. You can see the difference between the ballot from May of last year and what they're putting on the ballot this time. They hid that, and they did it on purpose, so that the majority of the voters, when you went into the voting booth, you had no idea. You would be voting, if you're voting yes, thinking it was only for 5.7 mils. It's not. They tricked everybody and put this on the ballot. But the school district say that they heard the voters and are coming back with a smaller request for new taxes is misleading and disingenuous. Some would even call it a bald-faced lie. While technically correct, they have reduced the request for a new funding by 0.12 mils, the leverage millage shell game makes it look like significantly smaller than it is by shifting from a 7.5 replacement mil to a 5.7 mil additional levy. With so many cuts already supposedly made and aren't coming back, why is the school district asking for nearly the same amount of money from May 2019? They told us they were reducing it, and they didn't. It's a lie.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Okay. I can't finish? Okay. We have this posted on the VoteNet website if you want to see it.
Yes, hi. Leonard Graff from Sosse Marauder, Alabama. I wanted to offer Dr. Cozad a third way to communicate with the rest of the community. Something we're not allowed to do here is ask questions, and if I were to ask you a question, you're not obliged, I guess, to answer the questions. So why not have a forum with the board members? Not a coffee, you know, not a coffee forum, but an open forum, very much like this, where you can exchange your questions and answers, perhaps challenge this type of information, or refute it in any way you want. Like the auditor's report here was presented by Dr. Cozad with his flavoring, and I'm not saying that there's any lies here or anything like that, but obviously, you're going to market your needs in your own way. But what I would like to see is, well, maybe bringing in the auditors to help answer some of the questions and provide some of the information that you may not know, that was somewhere else in the report, things like that. That's my question, is would you have a forum like this for questions and answers? Because I think that's a great way to get on-the-spot information. Thanks.
We'd appreciate you to come on the 17th.
I will.
Craig and Shelley Benson? Can I pronounce that right?
Yeah, Craig and Shelley Benson, my wife's a teacher here at the middle school. All I know is, work really hard and have all the kids' best interests in mind. It's really important that we support all our kids. So that's why I'm prepared speech.
Thank you. And Josh Preston?
Good evening. Some of you know us. Actually, I think at this point, most of you know us. We've been in the community for the last quite a few months. We have heard and investigated every idea you have brought to us. We have looked at every painful detail in excruciating, excruciating length. There has been nothing hidden by this school board. Everything has been put out there. The information that Mr. Stafford just told you, we reported publicly to this community in October.
Yep, December 30th.
December 30th. I take that back. Now, at the same time, what has not been mentioned is that the 1.8 mil 1981 levy that is still on the books, that is not being replaced, has a 12% rollback from the state that is being paid for by the state in lieu of us. If we were to have passed that 7.5 mil replacement levy, we would have lost that 12% rollback, and it would have been put into the new 7.5 mils that we would have voted on the books. The 5.7 mil levy that the school is asking for now is, in fact, a little bit less, but at the same time, we are still taking 12% from the state, which is something that we keep on asking our school board to try and figure out how to do. The only conclusion we've been able to draw from all of the research we've done, which by the way, is at thebellbrookresearchangels.com, is that there is nothing more that this school can do to cut its budget, short of reducing the service levels it provides to the community. Now, take a minute and think about what service levels means for a school. Service levels, when you're teaching kids, is teachers. That means that to reduce the service level, this board has to choose to send people home. They have to choose to stop giving our kids experiences, stop giving us opportunities to have sports, to experience science and experiential-based learning, to be able to have the experiences that we want for our kids as they grow. We have to ask, what feels like more truth to us? What is the real truth? Does this board want to eliminate nearly all of the JV sports teams? Do they want to eliminate and send home teachers who have cared for our kids for years? Is this entire board, Dr. Cozad and Mr. Liming, who has been, by the way, a treasurer in schools for 32 years, ready to make these cuts and reduce us to state minimums for education? My answer is probably not. So what are we going to do? Do we believe the Ohio auditor, the facts and the data that we prepared, and the people here that we have chosen, in some cases, over and over, to represent us here? Or are we going to believe information that's being passed around the community with relatively little in- or no-sighted facts or sources to base them on? At the end of the day, the choice really is yours, and we hope you can make it.
That finishes our open communication period, and we move now into our superintendent's report. Thank you for all of you who spoke today.
New business, certified, licensed employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty, recommend, number one, to recommend approval of unpaid childcare leave of absence for Ellen Guthrie for the period of March 2 through April 2020, dates approximate.
Any discussion, questions?
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Recommend approval of unpaid medical leave of absence for John Rommel for the period of March 12 through April 17, 2020, dates approximate.
Motion? Karen?
Second.
Karen? Any questions, comments? Please call roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Recommend approval of the following supplemental duty contracts for the 2019-20 school year, stipend 100% unless indicated, Caleb Rugerman, all the way through Shelby Sigmund.
Good motion? Mrs. Sloughman? Mrs. Long? Any questions, comments? Please call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Supplemental duty, other, be resolved, the Bell Brook Sugar Creek Board of Education has offered these supplemental duty positions via posting to licensed employees of the district. The board either had no qualified licensed employee applicants, or no employees applied before these positions were offered to non-licensed persons. The following non-licensed persons have met qualifications for the board posting of supplemental duty positions as noted below. Number five, recommend approval of the following supplemental duty contracts for the 2019-20 school year, stipend 100% unless indicated, previous approval unless it has an asterisk there, Zachary True, all the way through Barth Schenk.
Good motion?
Second.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Any questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Recommend approval of the following supplemental duty volunteers for the 2019-20 school year, Christopher Crane and Jonah Ewing.
Good motion? Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. France? Any questions or comments? Okay, please call roll.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Recommend approval of the following supplemental duty volunteers for the 2020-21 school year, Shelby Sigmund and Brad Stork.
Is it motion?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman and Mrs. France? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the following substitute teachers for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Rachel Charlesworth, all the way through Julie Williams.
Good motion? Mrs. Sloughman? Mrs. Long? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval of request for teacher job share effective for the 2020-21 school year for Rachel Barker and Ashley Duberry.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Long?
Second.
Ms. Slothman? Any discussion? This is actually a benefit for us as we're looking for opportunities to consolidate. So this is, this is a great thing and a real blessing for them as well, as I understand. Call the roll.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Support staff employment resignation leave of absence. Recommend approval of the following substitute support staff for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. Susan Davis, I'm going to name because I'm going to leave one out here and I'm going to remove one. So Susan Davis, Christopher Futter, Deana Harper, Allison Schenk, Megan Simmons, and Gary Stewart. So remove Timothy Steele.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Ms. France and Ms. Long? Any discussion?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Budget reductions. Recommend approval of district budget reductions effective fiscal year 2020-2021, as outlined in district finances reports to the board.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Slothman, I second that. Is there any more discussion? Is there any other discussion? Again, this has been a difficult, difficult decision, difficult to hear, difficult to work on. We appreciate, again, the teachers, the staff, the administration, and our superintendent, our treasurer, for the work they have gone through to prepare for this. Call the roll.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
D 2020-21 school calendar. Recommend approval of option three as the district-wide school calendar for the 2020-21 school year.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Slothman?
Second.
Ms. Long?
And so just a brief explanation of that. So Monday, August 10th is the first teacher day, and then the first student day is August 13th. We finish up first semester before winter break. Spring break is March 29th through April 5th. Last student day is May 20th. Last teacher day is May 21st.
Well, we really are trying to finish first semester, so we get first semester exams
before winter break. So just the way the schedule fits for this year, that's why. And that's really been the trend around neighboring districts also, of trying to get that first semester done before winter break. Because if not, then you're coming back for a week or two of second quarter, and then you're taking exams. Or you take exams before you leave, and then you come back for the rest of second quarter. It's just a little awkward. And also to point out here, there was feedback, it's been a while, at a board meeting about military families and days at the, at the base, and so days off that they have. We really tried to work hard. As you look at the calendar here, we have, we have days off, October 12th, November 11th. So those are, those are days that teachers are working, but those are kids, there are days that kids are off. So again, trying to be, almost goes back, not almost, it does go back to the Purple Star Award that Stephen Bell reserved, trying to be friendly to military families and trying to be mindful as much as possible, as much as we can do to be mindful, because if they're off work, and just trying to be friendly to them.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
E O H S A A membership. Recommend approval of the resolution, authorizing continued membership for Bellebrook High School, Bellebrook Middle School, and Ohio High School Athletic Association for the upcoming 2020-21 school year for students in grades seven to 12.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. France?
Second.
Ms. Slothman? Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
F out-of-state travel. Recommend approval of the following out-of-state travel, Belle Creek Math Cantaphlon team, Indianapolis, Indiana, on April 17, 18, 2020. Participate in competition. Advisor Scott Anderson, Dave Harry, Amanda Hoff. Cost of the district includes three sub-teachers for one day. And also, eighth grade students to Washington DC, May 11 through the 14th, 2021, for education, cultural enrichment. Cost of board includes three to four substitute for four days.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Slothman?
Second.
Ms. Long? Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Summer 2020 athletic camps. Request approval of the following summer 2020 athletic camps. Volleyball youth camp, cheerleading youth camp, girls' basketball youth camp, and softball youth camp.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. France?
Second.
And Ms. Long?
Second.
Any discussion? So this is all at, either at the middle school or at the high school?
Correct.
All right. Please call, call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Donation. Recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude. Jeffrey Stahl, Parks Express Electronics Sound Equipment to District Music Department.
We have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Long?
Second.
Ms. Slothman? Mr. Stahl is here this evening. Thank you very much. That's excellent. We greatly appreciate that. Call the roll.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Recommend approval of membership appointment of board members to the following positions for the county year 2020. So this is something that we originally had on the January 9th and with a few new board members, thought would give a little bit more time to think about which ones that we want to be involved with.
So before we make a motion, we kind of need to put names with all the spots. So the OSBA student achievement is Karen has expressed an interest in that. And I've expressed an interest in the Capitol Conference delegate, and Karen is the alternate. And the Bellebrook Shire Creek Education Foundation, Mary has expressed an interest in that. And Kevin has expressed an interest in the safety committee. And Virginia in the business advisory council. So we still have a financial advisory council, excuse me, committee member open, and a legislative liaison spot open. Okay, Mary, on the financial advisory committee. And I'll go ahead and sign up for legislative liaison. Okay, so listening, everyone would be part of the Ohio School Board Association, so that's an automatic assignment for everybody. So the legislative liaison is Carpenter, achievement liaison is Long, delegate to Capitol Conference is Carpenter, delegate, alternate delegate is Karen Long, BSEF is Mary France, financial advisory Mary France, and safety committee Kevin Price, and business advisor Ms. Slothman. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Long?
Second.
And Ms. Slothman, a second? Any further discussion? It's not exactly a speak now for older teens. Okay, let's call the roll.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, items, information, board member comments, bullying report for first semester 2019-20. So at Stephen Bell, we had zero incidents. Belle Creek intermediate, eight. Middle school, 12. And high school, 10. So again, these are just reported. So district administrations require to promptly investigate all accusations of harassment, intimidation, bullying, and dating bias in the classroom, on school property to and from school, and or at school-sponsored events, and document their findings. Those listed above are the actual number of reports that have been verified. So any type of bullying or harassment, we take very seriously. Those things are reported, and we fully investigate those, and to get those situations resolved. We take those very seriously. We do not allow, we do not condone that kind of behavior in our school district. Levy Information Meeting, as I said earlier, Monday, February 17th at 6:00 PM, Bellebrook Middle School, right here. It'll be the same setup. Those, actually online right now in the levy information section of the meetings, there is a link there to put questions. So if you have a question, if you have a question, you can submit it online right now. Or if you choose at the door, there's a three-by-five card, you can write down a question on there. We are having the date mediation center. They are looking all those questions online. They have that information online, and they are getting those three-by-five cards. They are the ones that are choosing those questions, and if there's a few that are similar, they'll put those together. I don't think we had any that similar last time. They ask all those questions to the district representatives that are here. Every question that was asked or that was put on a three-by-five card, there was an answer for. So David Graham will also, like I said earlier, David Graham will be here doing pretty much the same presentation as last time. But everybody is more than welcome to come to that. And Mary, you already said you were thinking to be ahead. So I don't have any, I don't have anything else.
All right, is there any other board member with comments for this evening? All right, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Ms. France?
Second.
Ms. Slothman? Anybody want to, are you doing that? All right, let's call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Slothman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. France?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes. We adjourned at 8:45. Thank you all for coming out this evening.[1787.12][1787.12](applause)